Good evening. This seventy-fifth meeting of the seventy-second term of the Baltimore City Council is now called to order. Please turn off all cell phones or put them on vibrate. Tonight's invocation will be delivered by Father Carmen of Saint Leo's Roman Catholic Church. Following the invocation, we will have the pleasant allegiance.
Lord our Creator, we know that just the task of being full persons already is quite a challenge and requires grace and inspiration. But even more so, when we are given responsibility for our brothers and sisters, then how much more do we need? Your Spirit, your guidance, your inspiration, your courage, that we might worthily serve and really help others. Give us the grace to step back, to see the wider picture, to understand problems and situations as they are, to step back away from personal worries and fears and concerns, do we might serve the common good as best we can, that our city might be blessed with peace and safety and prosperity. And just a thought to share with everybody, the golden rule according to some of our world religions. In Judaism, what is hateful to you, do not do to your neighbor. This is the whole Torah, and all the rest is commentary. Islam, not one of you truly believes until you wish for others what you wish for yourself. Hinduism, this is the sum of duty. Do not do to others what would cause pain if done to you. Buddhism, treat not others in ways that you yourself would find hurtful. Sikhism, I am a stranger to no one, and no one is a stranger to me. Indeed, I am a friend to all. And Christianity, in everything due to others is you would have them do to you, for this is the law and the prophets. May God bless all of you. I bless and thank God for the opportunity to be with you. May the Lord bless all of those close to us, all of those we love, and keep us safe. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Tonight's showcase Baltimore presenter is Dana Carr, Executive Director of Leaders of Tomorrow Youth Center.
Good evening, everybody, and thank you so much for the opportunity, the Baltimore City Council, for giving Leaders of Tomorrow Youth Center an opportunity to speak tonight. I'm just here really to give you a little bit of information about the organization and how you can become involved. Leaders of Tomorrow Youth Center, as we affectionately call ourselves LTYC, was founded in 2004. We are an arts education nonprofit organization, and the organization was founded and started by alumni of Baltimore School for the Arts. I am also an alum of the very prestigious Baltimore School for the Arts. And so, the organization was really birthed out of a need at that time in Baltimore City of wanting to make sure that every student had equitable access to the arts. We know unfortunately that a lot of times when budgets and funding is involved, the arts are typically one of the first programs to go. And again, being a product of a Baltimore School for the Arts education that was rich and robust and rigorous and cultural, we wanted to be a part of making sure that everyone in Baltimore City, every student in Baltimore City, had those same types of educational experiences and really focusing in on the pre-K through eighth grade space. And so, that's how the organization got started. We are a homegrown organization. We are a cultural-based organization, and we love Baltimore and the students in Baltimore and really wanting to create impact. We have been fortunate enough to work in the city schools, both directly through the district and in other schools in Baltimore City, private, independent, and charter schools, again, to fulfill the mission of making sure that every student has equitable access to the arts. We've been able to touch and impact over one hundred schools in our time and from our inception, and we hope in the next fifteen years, we just celebrated our fifteen-year anniversary last year, that we'll be able to touch a hundred more schools and thousands and thousands of students. So, what does the work consist of? What do we do? So, we are going into schools, we're partnering with schools, community-based organizations to bring the arts to students. We believe that every child's educational experience should be inclusive of the arts. So, we offer things like dance, theater, music, creative writing, media arts. Theater is my background, and we're able to go with schools, talk to principals, see what their vision is, and go in and supplement and even enhance the educational academic experiences that they are already giving their students. We really have a strong focus on making sure that our instruction and our programs are culturally specific, are culturally relevant. We train our instructors to make sure that they have meaningful instruction, right, for students, that the arts connects back to the community. We believe that if students have that type of instruction and that type of academic experience, that they're gonna pour it back into their communities. And again, community is really important to us. Not only are we in the schools and working directly with students, we have professional development programs for instructors. We have started two years ago, the Urban Arts Educators Academy, which is a specific pedagogy in a specific institute that trains arts instructors who are teaching in urban environments, right? And what are the specific tools and resources that instructors who are teaching in those environments need, and we wanna give them that support. We focus heavily on parent engagement, so we're working very closely with our families. This year, we just did for the fifth time what we call our annual Love Drive, and it's a charitable campaign that we do each year where we give back to the families of the communities that we serve through brand-new coats, household items, and we were, again, fortunate enough to be able to serve over five hundred families in Baltimore City just passed in December. So, we're excited about the work that we're doing. It's important to us, for all of the people who are here, specifically the politicians here, for us to be connected to you and for you to be connected to us so that you can continue and we can continue to really advocate on behalf of our students, right? The students at the end of the day are our future, they are our tomorrow, and it's important to make sure that the programs that they are experiencing and the education that they are experiencing is inclusive of the arts. So, yes, again, cross-curricular connections, wanna make sure I'm not forgetting anything, wanting to make sure that everything, again, is translated to the students. And again, it's realistic, it's meaningful, and that, again, they can take everything that they're getting back from the organization into their communities. We also, again, because we're arts-based, are giving opportunities for artists to work. We also have events where now people who are maybe not artists can come and participate in LTYC events and see the type of work that we're doing. And everything that we do, every proceed, every benefit goes back into our programs to be able to do field trips, have supplies for students, offer scholarships for after-school and summer programs, as well as the school, the in-school work that we do. So, again, we just wanted to let you know who we are. We have a website that you can definitely get more information. It's www.ltyc.net. We are also on Facebook, Twitter, Instagram, and YouTube, and then you can also reach out via email at info, I-N-F-O, at ltyc.net. And again, we just want you to be a part and to be involved so that we can continue to make impact in the arts education space in Baltimore City. So, thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. A roll call. The clerk will call the roll of the members.
President Scott, Cohen, McCray, Dorsey, Henry, Schleifer, Middleton, Pinkett, Burnett, Bullock, Reisinger, Costello, Stokes, Sneed, Clark. Mr. President, we have a quorum.
We will now proceed with the adoption of the journal.
Mr. President, the Journal of the December sixteenth, twenty nineteen proceedings are on the council members' desks.
Without objection, the journal will be adopted. The journal is adopted. Bill signed by the mayor. Bill signed by the mayor can be found on pages two through five of your agenda. Bills to be introduced.
City Council Bill Twenty dash zero four eight two, Inclusionary Housing Requirements, Sunset Extension, for the purpose of extending the automatic termination of ordinance zero seven four dash four seven four, inclusionary housing, providing for a special effective date, and generally relating to the promotion of affordable residential units. Sponsor, City Council President on behalf of the administration.
This has been assigned to the Land Use Committee.
City Council Bill Twenty dash zero four eight three, Public Ethics Law, Gifts to Elected Officials and Staff, for the purpose of expanding certain provisions to prohibit elected officials and their staff from soliciting or accepting certain gifts in enumerated circumstances, correcting, clarifying, and conforming related provisions, and generally relating to ethics in the public sector. Sponsors, President Scott, Henry, Schleifer, Costello, Burnett, Pinkett, Cohen, Dorsey, Clark, Middleton.
Please add Councilwoman Sneed, Councilman Stokes, Councilman Bullock, Councilman Reisinger as co-sponsors. Thank you to my co-sponsors. This simple clarification law closes a loophole in existing public ethics law. It clarifies that elected officials and their staff may not accept gifts from any lobbyist, person who does business with the city, or anyone with a financial interest that might be impacted by their duties as an official. Elected officials and their staff are currently prohibited from accepting gifts from people they know are lobbyists. This ordinance clarifies that elected officials and their staff may not accept gifts from anyone they should reasonably know to be a lobbyist or meets those other qualifications. This is just the next example of how this body, this council, is leaving no stone left unturned in trying to rebuild trust with the public and reforming our public ethics law and everything about being transparent in our roles as city officials. So, I'm grateful to the support of my colleagues and look forward to a great hearing in the Judiciary Committee. This has been assigned to Judiciary Committee. Resolutions to be introduced.
City Council Resolution Twenty dash zero one eight eight R, Informational Hearing, Syringe Service Expansion, for the purpose of inviting representatives from the Health Department, the Baltimore Police Department, the Fire Department, the Mayor's Office of Criminal Justice, and the Law Department to explain the status of syringe service programs in the city and the state. Sponsors, President Scott, Henry, Costello, Burnett, Pinkett, Cohen, Dorsey, Schleifer, Clark, Middleton.
Please add Councilman Bullock, Councilman Reisinger, Councilman Stokes, Councilwoman Sneed as co-sponsors. This has been assigned to the Health Committee.
City Council Resolution Twenty dash zero one eight nine R, Informational Hearing, Overdose Prevention Sites, for the purpose of inviting representatives from the Health Department, the Baltimore Police Department, the Fire Department, the Mayor's Office of Criminal Justice, and the Law Department to provide information about overdose prevention sites and how they could be established in Baltimore City. Sponsors, President Scott, Henry, Costello, Burnett, Pinkett, Cohen, Dorsey, Clark, Middleton.
Please add Councilman Bullock, Councilman Reisinger, Councilman Stokes, Councilwoman Sneed as co-sponsors. Thank you to all of my co-sponsors. Let me be clear, Baltimore has had a overdose crisis my entire life, and what we have been afraid or unwilling to do is address it as a public health issue that it is. And since 2015, there's been thirty-five hundred fatal overdoses in Baltimore. That outweighs the number of people that we lost to even gun violence in Baltimore City. We have to have a deep look at the city's needle exchange program that's administered by the Health Department and the role of community-based direct role service providers in providing these services. I'm also calling for a hearing to explore overdose prevention sites, the services that they provide, and how they fit into a evidence-based harm reduction approach to address Baltimore's overdose epidemic. We have to, I was telling a group of people yesterday that this is also personal for me because it's a part of my personal growth. When you grow up in Baltimore City, especially in neighborhoods like the one I grew up in, Park Heights, culturally, you are taught to look at people who have or struggle with addiction as less than human. This is about us rehumanizing people and understanding that our brothers and sisters, our mothers and sons who are struggling with addiction are human, and that they deserve to be treated fairly and they deserve to get the help that they need. The number-one responsibility of any government is to save the lives and protect the lives of its citizens, and overdose prevention sites have been proven to do that across the globe, is something that is coming slowly but surely into America. And what we're gonna do with these hearings is not only build momentum, but also educate all of us here on the council and all of the public about what Baltimore could be doing to join the rest of the world and how to deal with addiction in a different way and overdose in a different way. Because we know that we have a problem, and we know that the way that we're currently attacking that problem is not working. So, this is just the beginning of a long work, a lot of work that we have ahead of us to get ahead finally of this crisis. And I wanna also take time to ask some very special guests to stand and be recognized who have been a part of this effort in Baltimore. OSI Baltimore is here with a delegation of harm reduction advocates from other countries. So, I want to recognize Beverly Lightfoot and Russell Maynard, who are here all the way from Vancouver, Canada, and Aura Royk, who is all the way here from Barcelona, Spain, one of my favorite international cities to visit. So, if you're here, please stand, wave your hands. Oh, they're in the back, there they are. I also want to recognize the Baltimore Harm Reduction Coalition, Charm City Care Connection, Power Recovery Center, Parents Like Liz, Bemini, and the many people who serve our communities in need each day and advocate on behalf of harm reduction. So, thank you for your great work and please stand to be recognized. Thank you so much. I look forward to working with each and every one of you. This has been assigned to the Health Committee.
City Council Resolution Twenty dash zero one nine zero R, Informational Hearing, Mayor's Office of Criminal Justice's Response to High Homicide Rate, for the purpose of inviting representatives from the Mayor's Office of Criminal Justice to inform the City Council how the office plans to lower the city's homicide rate in 2020. Sponsors, Stokes, President Scott, Henry, Schleifer, Costello, Burnett, Cohen, Dorsey, Clark, Middleton, Pinkett.
Please add Councilman Bullock as a co-sponsor, Councilman Reisinger, Councilwoman Sneed. Chair recognizes Councilman Stokes.
Mr. President, this is just a hearing asking the Mayor's Office of Criminal Justice to come before the City Council, explain to us their plan in addressing the city homicide rate here in Baltimore, and how we can share that with our constituents also. Thank you.
Thank you. This has been assigned to the Public Safety Committee.
City Council Resolution Twenty dash zero one nine one R, Recognizing January as Human Trafficking Awareness Month, for the purpose of recognizing January as Human Trafficking Awareness Month and recognizing the tireless and ongoing efforts of the Baltimore City Human Trafficking Collaborative in educating the citizens of Baltimore to assist in the prevention of human trafficking and supporting victims of human sex and labor trafficking. Sponsors, Burnett, President Scott, Henry, Schleifer, Costello, Pinkett, Cohen, Dorsey, Clark, Middleton.
Please add Councilman Bullock, Councilwoman Sneed, Councilman Stokes, Councilman Reisinger as co-sponsors. Chair recognizes Councilman Burnett.
Thank you, Mr. President, and colleagues. As you are aware, we are entered our second year as the Baltimore City Human Trafficking Collaborative, which represents a fifty-five agency member effort of government, nonprofit, community leaders, survivors of trafficking, all working together to address this issue and make the lives of better for the folks who've experienced it and to prevent it moving forward. We've held trainings all over the city of Baltimore, and we'll continue to do that throughout 2020. So, thanks to my colleagues who hosted us in your districts, and for the rest of you, I will be reaching out so that we can continue to educate the community on this very serious issue and also continue to push meaningful legislation and funding for organizations that do this amazing work. I would like to make a motion to move for immediate adoption.
Roll call.
President Scott.
Yes.
Councilman Cohen, Councilwoman McCray, Councilman Dorsey, Councilman Henry, Councilman Schleifer, Vice President Middleton, Councilman Pinkett, Councilman Burnett, Councilman Bullock, Councilman Reisinger, Councilman Costello, Councilman Stokes, Councilwoman Sneed, Councilwoman Clark.
The motion is approved. This resolution has been adopted.
City Council Resolution Twenty dash zero one nine two R, Informational Hearing, Are We Prepared for Election 2020, for the purpose of inviting the President of the Baltimore City Board of Elections and the Election Director for the Baltimore City Board of Elections to brief the City Council on preparations and readiness for the upcoming 2020 primary and general elections in Baltimore City. Sponsors, Dorsey, President Scott, Henry, Schleifer, Costello, Burnett, Pinkett, Cohen, Middleton, Clark.
Please add Councilman Bullock, Councilwoman Sneed, Councilman Stokes, Councilman Reisinger as co-sponsors. Chair recognizes Councilman Dorsey.
Thank you, Mr. Council President. Most of us over the years have read one news report or another on this subject, so I'm just gonna reiterate some of what's been written on this subject and read a few excerpts from a number of articles on this. Cause I wanna just point out, I guess, that the problems that have been faced at polling places over the years are many and varied, you know, things such as poor election judge training and recruitment, lack of communication between the board and citizens, voters, and as well as lack of communication between the board and the people supposed to be running the polling places, and extending also to faulty equipment. Here are a couple excerpts. "After voting began, several citizens at the Central Library, which opened late, said they were not given both pages of the ballot. Poll workers kept telling them, 'It's only one page, it's front and back,' and eventually this gentleman showed them a sample ballot he had on his phone and said, 'There's a second page.'" "The State Board of Elections concluded that one thousand one hundred and eighty-eight provisional ballots were inappropriately scanned into the vote tally on Election Day, without judges verifying that the voters were eligible, and four hundred sixty-five other provisional ballots were not considered. The Board's findings were released on Monday afterwards." "On the eve of Election Day last week, Baltimore election officials were scrambling. They didn't have enough polling place technicians to staff the city's precincts after a company hired to help had fallen short. So, they organized a last-minute training session hours before polls were to open, but the last-minute problems, including temporarily missing ballots and precinct confusion among some judges." It goes on. "In Baltimore City, poll workers showed up late or not at all and did not understand how to use the electronic voting machines and the new e-poll book. The ACLU reports that four polling sites in Baltimore City opened as late as noon, more than five hours late. Voters who went to Friendship Preparatory Academy at Calverton in West Baltimore to cast their ballots were redirected to James Mosher Elementary School around the corner. Friendship Academy, previously Calverton Elementary Middle School, had been closed since early January when cold weather caused plumbing and heating problems." The stories go on. The point for me is that this is all really unacceptable and that we have elections coming up this year, one as early as February fourth for the special election to fill the seat left open by the passing of the late Elijah Cummings in the Seventh Congressional District, and then early voting for the primary elections and Election Day, all coming up in April. We must see to it that our citizens have the greatest accessibility to vote as the Board of Elections can make possible. I look forward to a hearing on this. Thank you for supporting this, everybody.
Thank you. This has been assigned to Legislative Investigations Committee. Consent Calendar. You can find the consent calendar in Section A at the back of the agenda. Without objection, the consent calendar will be approved. The consent calendar is approved. Chair recognizes Councilman Costello.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that we read short titles for second, third reader for the duration of the hearing.
Without objection, we will read short titles for the remainder of the meeting. Short titles will be read for the remainder of the meeting. Committee reports. We will now move to bills on second reader, Health Committee.
City Council Bill Nineteen dash zero four one zero, the Baltimore City Trauma Responsive Care Act.
Chair recognizes Councilman Burnett.
Thank you, Mr. President. The committee held two hearings in a work session on this bill, but before we move, I would like the bill sponsor to give the opportunity to speak a little bit more about it.
Chair recognizes Councilman Cohen.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you to Chairman Burnett for holding two hearings in a work session. They were incredibly productive. Imagine being the one-year-old child of Destiny Harrison. Almost every day, you go with your mother to her hair salon on Orleans Street. Your mom made it despite every system and structure working against her. She graduated from Mervo, she started her own shop, she gives back to her community. Yet, just a few days before Christmas, someone walked into her salon and murdered her in front of her one-year-old child. Imagine being the children of Carmen Rodriguez. Their mother took pride in her convenience store. She was a staple in the Patterson Park neighborhood. She showed us not only how to serve, but to love her customers and our community. Then, as she was getting ready to leave her store one night with her kids at her side, two men walked in and shot her at point range, point-blank range, killing her. These homicides happened within two days of each other. We are living in a city where people murder mothers in front of their children, and we know that without a major intervention, that trauma that those children have endured will only get worse. It will lead to horrific health outcomes. It will lead to a higher likelihood that they themselves will be either victims or perpetrators of violence. We know that when violence occurs, it is not just the victim, but our entire community that's impacted. We have got to stop this deadly cycle in its tracks, and we can. Like so many public health problems, this one has a solution, but we cannot expect police alone to solve it. The Trauma Responsive Care Act will ensure that every city agency works collaboratively to prevent, reduce, and respond to trauma throughout Baltimore. This bill authorizes a task force built from community, government, nonprofits, educators, doctors, and even barbers. This legislation also requires our agencies to review all of their policies and procedures with a lens toward reducing harm, because too often, city government is complicit in some of the trauma that we experience. In addition to the pain we felt, we've also seen a movement begin to grow. Over eighty groups and individuals have joined together to transform Baltimore into a healing city. They are here with us tonight, and they will be here with us when this bill becomes a law. I thank my colleagues for their support.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilmen. Thank you both, and Councilman, Chairman Burnett, for your hard work on this most important issue. Chair recognizes Councilman Burnett.
There are amendments and copies on all of the members' discs, and I move the amendments.
All those in favor of approving the amendment say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. The amendments are approved. Chair recognizes Councilman Burnett.
I move the bill favorable as amended.
All those in favor of approving this bill say aye. All opposed say nay. The motion is approved. This bill moves to third reader.
City Council Bill Nineteen dash zero four seven six, Tobacco Distribution, Confirming Modifications.
Chair recognizes Councilman Burnett.
Thank you, Mr. President. The committee held a hearing on Tuesday, December seventeenth, and I move the bill favorable.
All those in favor of approving this bill say aye. All opposed say nay. The motion is approved. This bill moves to third reader, Taxation, Finance, and Economic Development.
City Council Resolution Nineteen dash zero one six eight R, Growing the Film Industry in Baltimore.
Chair recognizes Council Vice President Middleton.
Thank you, Mr. President. This bill came out of committee on December nineteenth, twenty nineteen. Sponsor was Councilman Leon Pinkett, and the committee approved the bill with a favorable amendment. I move the bill favorable.
All those in favor of approving this resolution say aye. All opposed say nay. The motion is approved. This resolution is approved.
City Council Resolution Nineteen dash zero one six nine R, Informational Hearing, Minority and Women's Business Opportunity Office.
Chair recognizes Council Vice President Middleton.
Thank you, Mr. President. This bill came out of committee on December nineteenth, twenty nineteen as well. Sponsor, Councilman Bill Henry. The committee approved the bill with a favorable report. I move the bill as favorable.
All those in favor of approving this resolution say aye. All opposed say nay. The motion is approved. This resolution is approved. Thank you. Committee announcements. If there is no objection, we will suspend Rule nine seven to refer the following ordinance read by the clerk to the Equity and Structure Committee.
City Council Bill Nineteen dash zero three seven eight, Ethics Board, Administration and Staff.
Committee announcements. Chair recognizes Council Vice President Middleton.
Thank you, Mr. President. Taxation, Finance, and Economic Development Committee will hear Bill Number Nineteen dash oh three two zero Thursday, January twenty-third, twenty twenty, at ten oh five a.m. here in council chambers, and it's the Passage for Higher Services Tax Corrective. Also, the Taxation, Finance, and Economic Development Committee will hear Bill Number Nineteen dash zero four. I need permission to suspend the rules ten-two and ten-three to announce a hearing.
Without objection, the rules- Without objection, the rules will be suspended. The rules are suspended. Chair recognizes Council Vice President Middleton.
Thank you. The Taxation, Finance, and Economic Development Committee will hear Bill Number 19-0479 also on Thursday, January 23rd, 2020, at 10:00 a.m. here in council chambers, and it's the Property Tax Credit, Low Income Employees of the City of Baltimore. And also, these two bills are added to three other bills that will be heard, also heard on that day, so the committee be prepared for five bills on that date.
Chair recognizes Councilman Schleifer.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Public Safety Committee will be holding our monthly oversight hearing along with the Budget Committee for the Police Department on January 30th at 5:00 p.m. here in council chambers. Thank you.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Councilman Henry.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Equity and Structure Committee will hear Bill 19-0378 for the purpose of appointing the Inspector General to serve as the Executive Director of the Board of Ethics on Thursday, January 30th at 12:00 noon here in the council chambers.
Thank you. Committee announcements. Any more on this side? Councilman Cohen.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Education Youth Committee will hold a legislative oversight hearing on the Baltimore City Children and Youth Fund on February 20th, beginning at 5:00 p.m. in city council chambers to hear from staff from BCYF, associated black charities, grantees, as well as the administration. Thank you.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Councilman Dorsey.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Transportation Committee will hold a hearing on Wednesday, January 29th at 3:00 p.m. in council chambers on Bill 18-0285. As you can hear by that number 18 at the beginning there, this has been in committee for a while. This is on police ordinances, repealing the prohibition on playing in the street. Thank you.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Councilman Costello.
Thank you, Mr. President. Budget and Appropriations Committee will hold a hearing on LO 19-0060 on Thursday, January 30th at 5:10 p.m. in chambers, legislative oversight hearing on Baltimore Police Department. Thank you, Mr. President.
Chair recognizes Councilman Rosenger.
Mr. President, members of the council, the Land Use Committee will hold a hearing Bill 19-0462 on Wednesday, March 4th at 1:00 p.m. in the council chambers. This bill is zoning conditional use conversion of a single-family dwelling unit to three dwelling units in the R8 zoning district with variances, and it's located at 2112 St. Paul Street. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Councilman Burnett.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move to suspend the rules to announce a hearing.
Without objection, the rules will be suspended. The rules are suspended.
On Tuesday, January 21st, 2020, at 2:00 p.m., the Legislative Investigations Committee will have a hearing on Bill 20-0192R, informational hearing. Are we prepared for election 2020?
Thank you.
Also, the legislative oversight hearing scheduled for the Zero Waste Planning and Less Waste Plan is being rescheduled from March 10th, 2020, to March 17th, 2020, beginning at 10:00 a.m. And the legislative oversight hearing scheduled on Sexual and Reproductive Health is being rescheduled from April 8th, 2020, to April 7th, 2020, beginning at 10:00 a.m.
Thank you. Record announcements. I'll start with first asking that Council Vice President Milton honor a moment of silence for the now 11 victims that we lost to homicide in 2020 and all those that we've lost to overdoses as well, and then also ask that we honor a moment of silence for Mr. James Morant. Councilman Dorsey.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to ask for a moment of silence this evening for Loretta Hawkins. Y'all know my staff member Cory Page, who's been here with me since day one of the beginning of this term. He has been a steadfast caretaker to his grandmother for longer than I've known him, and she passed last week. There's going to be a funeral tomorrow at Faith Tabernacle at 2422 West Patapsco Avenue in the Lakeland Community. And so I'd just like to ask for a moment of silence for Loretta Hawkins. And then, in terms of the arts happening in the arts, I just wanna give a shout-out to my man Gary Thomas. Gary Thomas, until about a year ago, was the director of the Jazz Department at the Peabody Conservatory, my alma mater. He was, until then, the only director of the Jazz Department that that institution had ever known. He is a Baltimore native, raised in Cherry Hill. He continues to live in Baltimore. He is a distinctive voice in the history of jazz and one of the most influential and perhaps the best-living jazz saxophonist on the planet. He credits being one of the greats who never migrated to New York City and continuing to live and reside and be rooted here in Baltimore City as contributing significantly to the development of his distinctive sound. This is a man who, aside from being an enormous leader in his own right, is considered, what they call a first-call sideman. Like when somebody needs somebody to fill in as the saxophonist or to play a gig. I said for years, when Herbie Hancock needed a saxophonist for a weekend in Tokyo, Gary Thomas is the guy that he called. This is a man who played in Miles Davis's band, who played with Wayne Shorter, who, you know, who is a giant living among us. You can go see him for 25 bucks at Andi Music this Friday night. Two sets, 8:00 and 9:30. I will be there. You should be there, too.
Thank you. Stay on this side. Chair recognizes Councilman Henry.
Thank you. This is an announcement specifically for my constituents in the 4th District. The, we will be holding a 4th District Candidates Forum for City Council on February 6th at 6:30 p.m. at Northside Baptist. We have invited everyone who is currently filed for the 4th District City Council seat, and if anyone else jumps into the race before the 24th, they will be invited also. We encourage you to come out and hear from the people who will be competing to sit in this chair starting in December. Thank you.
Chair recognizes Councilman Cohen.
Thank you, Mr. President. I did wanna publicly recognize and thank some of the young people that helped to prompt this legislation, the Trauma Responsive Care Act, Jayana Damani and Brianna, who are all students from Frederick Douglass High School, as well as their great teacher, Mr. Dan Parsons, who's in the back here. Thank you for bringing this bill, and immediately after this council meeting right here in chambers, we will be having a press conference with Doctors for America, the Baltimore Teachers Union, and the Parent Community Advisory Board in support of this bill. Thank you.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Councilman Burnett.
Thank you, Mr. President. One, I wanted to ask for a moment of silence for Dr. Newsom, who is the assistant principal at Emmons and West Side High School, who passed away suddenly last week. And also, on a somewhat lighter note, members of the Baltimore City Human Trafficking Collaborative, including myself, will be participating in the Polar Bear Plunge on January 25th. It's our second year in a row. We do need more members of the team, so anyone, any takers, please let me know. I will send you the link. But we do that every year, one, to raise awareness for the collaborative, the work that we're doing, and two, to support the Special Olympics, so it does go to a great cause. So come join us. 2 o'clock, 25th.
I think you meant on a colder note, Councilman. Chair recognizes, any other, Chair recognizes Councilwoman Clark.
Mr. President, members of the council, first of all, I'd like to announce something sort of going back to the days when about that chair and desk were occupied by Victory Q Adams, Councilwoman from the old 4th District. And it is, she has just been announced as, now accepted and held up as in the Maryland Women's History, well, I wrote it down and now I forgot what I wrote, but commission. So she has been honored as one of Maryland's historic women, finally. We knew it all the time here in the Baltimore City Council as we watched her wrap Mayor William Donald Schaefer right around her little finger every time. She needed something for the people, and the big rap was the Fuel Fund, which she created, actually, after two people, a couple, an elderly couple in her district had died because they didn't have heat, they didn't have electoral, they couldn't afford BGE. And she started it then. It's now, actually, it's gone national, but certainly statewide in Maryland. First of its kind, BGE helped to fund it, and glad for that. But there was nothing like it before she invented it here on this floor. I would like to mention four people who, it's been a long time since we met, four people who passed in that time. And if I can go back to oldies but goodies, Joan Bareska died, and she was here during that era I just described. So was I. And we called, she worked for the mayor, and we called her, she said her enemies called her this, the Dragon Lady. Everybody called her that. And she loved it because she was one, and she had much, much, much to do with the good things that happened here in the city, including with William Donald Schaefer jumping in that aquarium pool with his ducky when something else didn't work out. So she passed, and I'm sure she's up there pushing things around, and I hope Victorine's there helping her to calm down and just sit and talk about good old times. Three other people, very important. And, Mr. President, you mentioned James Morant. He's a very, a scholar, a wise and wonderful, kind man, lived in Edner Gardens Lakeside, shockingly died Sunday, or I think, I mean, he looked in the prime of health. He will be sorely missed by his family and his community. Very special person. Ed Jeanette, perhaps you read about him. He worked, when I was president of the city council, he worked right in those rooms in there as legislative director in my office. Very, very young at the time, went on to really be an outstanding attorney, especially in cases of juveniles, helping in the juvenile court. One of Hamden's favorite sons. And then Eileen French. Mike and Eileen, that's what everybody say all the time in the Waverly neighborhood, because you don't think of one without the other. They were both and have been long-time residents in Waverly, right near the Waverly Elementary Middle School, and then one of those Victorian houses that they made sure we preserved way back in the early days. And so Eileen has died and passed, and it won't be the same without her. She was very quiet, but she was very strong. And she was like the Batman and Robin. She and her husband and her were always there fighting for that community. She will be sorely missed as well. I've already asked for that moment of, those moments of silence on behalf of those deceased, and thank you very much for your prayers for them.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Councilman Costello.
Thank you, Mr. President. I ask for a moment of silence for Ms. Rosetta Wright, who lived in Heritage Crossing. She unexpectedly passed away last week. Simply put, she was someone who did a ton of work for her community and was one of the sweetest people I've ever met in my life. I ask for a moment of silence for her and her family. Thank you.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Council Vice President Middleton.
And I also would like to add to the list a moment of silence for Beatrice Odom Scott. B. Scott was well-known throughout the entire city, long-serving Ashburton resident, former president of the Ashburton community. But many of us will remember her footprints forever, fingerprints forever on, in all the communities for her advocacy in helping and teaching children, families, and seniors in preserving their history and writing and publishing their own books. And she suddenly passed a few weeks ago as well.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Council Vice President Middleton.
We have a long list here of asking for a moment of silence, so I'm gonna go down the list. A moment of silence for Elaine French, James Morant, Edward Jevanet, Joan Bareski, Loretta Hawkins, Dr. Newsom, Rosetta Wright, and Beatrice Odom Scott, and also a moment of silence for now the, for the families of 11 victims of homicide, and also a moment of silence for our continued opioid epidemic.
Thank you. The next meeting of the city council will be held on Monday, January 27th at 5:00 p.m. Thank you. There being no further business before the council, this concludes the 75th meeting of the 72nd term of the Baltimore City Council.